The Lemonster City Council Meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Lemonster, 978-466-1922. The Lemonster City Council Meeting...
Residence A. Pleasant Street West Side, map 481, lots 19 and 20. Map 521, lot 1 and 39. Map 488, lots 1, 5, 6, 7, 8. Map 494, lots 18, 3A, 31A, 32A, 32B, and 32C. Pleasant Street East Side, map 561, lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map 340, lots 1 and 2. Map 410, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22, and 23. Map 496, lots 1, 2, and 3. And Low Street, map 488, lot 5. This hearing was continued from April 9th, 2018. I don't know if the petitioners want to come inside, or if you're comfortable where you are.
Where do you want it to be?
It's entirely up to you.
You want us to be outside?
No, 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 you're fine. Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay. Well, we can use the microphone here, right?
Sure.
Sure.
Yep.
I guess I'll start. You probably have this map memorized by now. John Bolger, 365 Pleasant Street. And I'd just like to plead and urge you guys to vote for this petition. I think we've demonstrated at this point in time that we're not trying to restrict people. We're not trying to be mean to people. You know, after talking with the building inspector and different people, if somebody wants to modify their house after it's turned to a Zone A, they still do have those possibilities. There might be another couple loops that they have to go through, but it's not the end of the road. But I think that the benefit for the neighborhood would be greatly improved. As we know, great destruction can be done as right in Zone B. And sometimes contractors can get carried away and bring that right to the limit and take off, which was very unfortunate. So, we just don't want to see that happen again and again and again. You know, because if it happens too many times, there's not a whole lot left, you know, to enjoy. I think one of the things about Lemonster is it does have a good mix of things, different neighborhoods. And this is, you know, a nice neighborhood. You know, where, I was going to say it's not, well, it isn't totally a selfish motive. Partially it is, because that's where we live, and we respect that area. But also for the city to protect a little bit of an area there, to keep it the way it is, not further restrict it, but keep it the way it is for the most part. So, I urge you to vote for us, if you will. And if you do, you won't see us again, so that'll be good. Thank you.
We did receive a letter from the city solicitor, Brian Riley. So, I should read that into the record. This is a letter addressed to the city clerk. It's dated April 10th, 2018. Dear Lynn, the Legal Affairs Committee requested an opinion regarding this petition, which seeks to have numerous parcels on Pleasant Street rezoned from Residence B to Residence A. The committee has asked for clarification as to the special effects that this change if approved would have on affected property owners, particularly with regard to so-called nonconforming parcels or uses. I would first note that while I will attempt to provide a summary opinion, this area is particularly difficult to capture all of the nuanced differences that can occur with specific facts peculiar to a particular lot. Just as a small sample, whether a use is protected or not can change significantly on when a building or special permit application was filed, whether a particular use was legally established when the zoning change occurred, whether two undersized lots were in common ownership or not, and whether a claimed nonconforming use had been abandoned or discontinued and lost the protection. As a general matter, however, a property owner is given certain protections if their property is rezoned, as set forth in General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6, which provides in relevant part, except as herein after provided, a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun, or to a building or special permit issued before the first publication of notice of the public hearing on such ordinance or bylaw required by Section 5, but shall apply to any change or substantial extension of such use to a building or special permit issued after the first notice of said public hearing, to any reconstruction, extension, or structural change of such structure, and to any alteration of a structure begun after the first notice of said public hearing to provide for its use for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent, except where alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure does not increase the nonconforming nature of such structure. Pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority or by the special permit granting authority designated by ordinance or bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. A zoning ordinance or bylaw shall provide that construction or operations under a building or special permit shall conform to any subsequent amendment of the ordinance or bylaw unless the use or construction is commenced within a period of not more than 12 months after the issuance of the permit, and in cases involving construction unless such construction is continued through to completion as continuously and expeditiously as is reasonable. A zoning ordinance or bylaw may define and regulate nonconforming uses or structures, abandon or not use for a period of two years or more. The general rule, therefore, is that when a zoning ordinance is amended with respect to a parcel of property, the new provisions will apply. However, if there is a lawfully created use being conducted on the property at the time of that amendment, and the change would prohibit that use, such use may continue as a pre-existing nonconforming use, or a protected use, also known as a grandfathered use, notwithstanding the change. It is important that the use was lawfully in existence beforehand. For example, if a commercial use was being conducted on a parcel, but it was prohibited or required a special permit under the prior zoning and was not authorized, it will not be protected as a pre-existing nonconforming use. The change of the subject parcels from Residence B to Residence A would eliminate certain uses that are currently available by special permit. For example, long-term care facilities, medical facilities, and apartment or multifamily residences are allowed by special permit in Residence B, but would be prohibited in Residence A. So, the ability to initiate such uses would no longer be available. As highlighted above, however, if such uses are either in existence or a special permit application had been approved before the first advertisement of a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment, then the use would be protected as pre-existing nonconforming. The same concept applies to the parcels themselves. For example, the RA District lists a minimum lot area of 21,780 square feet, while the RB District sets some minimum areas that are significantly smaller. If a lot was buildable under existing Residence B regulations, as a general rule, it will remain buildable after changing to Residence A for permitted Residence A uses, even though it may be undersized as a pre-existing nonconforming lot. If the owner also owned an abutting lot, however, the doctrine of merger could compel the combining of lots to create a conforming lot. Merger is an example of an issue that is heavily fact-dependent, however. As also highlighted above, a pre-existing nonconforming use is protected and may continue indefinitely unless it is abandoned or not used for a period of time. Our zoning ordinance indicates two years. If this occurs, then the property owner will be limited to establishing uses on the property that are either allowed by right or special permit under the current zoning ordinance. The owner would generally have rights to rebuild if the nonconforming use structure is destroyed by fire or other unintentional cause, and the nonconforming use may also be extended if the permit granting authority approves the extension under certain conditions. To reiterate, there are numerous variations as to how questions concerning pre-existing nonconforming uses will be determined, depending on the specific facts and history of the use and/or parcel in question. But I hope this summary assists in evaluating Petition 1418. If there are any further questions in this regard, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Brian Riley. Have to remind Attorney Riley to increase the font size on his emails. I also attached a chapter of Massachusetts Planning Handbook entitled "Nonconforming Uses and Structures," which I thought goes into greater detail with specific issues. So, if anyone who's interested wants to get a copy, they can get a copy of everything from the city clerk. So, having read Attorney Riley's letter, are there any comments or questions from Legal Affairs? Counselor Bonanza? Any other counselor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will go to members of the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does anyone wish to address the council either in favor of or against this ruler?
Hello, my name is Dorothy Brulow, 54 Low Street. I'm in favor of this petition, and I wanted to ask you, last time you were asked at the meeting if you had gone to see the construction that is on the corner of Low Street and Pleasant Street, and most of you said you had. Then, I would like to ask you another question. Do you think that that construction is appropriate in our neighborhood, which is surrounded, that construction is surrounded by single-family homes? And if you don't, we're not asking for a lot, a whole street of Pleasant Street. We're only asking for a small portion of Pleasant Street to try and to protect our neighborhood. Now, the person that did get up the last time, I'd like to remind you, was an absentee landlord, does not live in our neighborhood. Another thing is that we not only consider this our home, but we consider this our home community, where people who live in that area care about their homes and the homes and the people that surround them. So, we call this basically a home community. And we have been denied in 2004. We have been ignored during the change in the ordinance. But as the buck stops here, you could help us to protect our neighborhood, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rula. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition?
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Dana Ramos, and I am at 30 Low Street. As you heard me speak before, we are literally the property, one of the properties that abuts the new construction. I wasn't sure exactly what else that we can say to you to convince you that we're simply asking, we're not asking for Lemonster not to be developed. That's not what we're asking. What we're asking is that according to where the homes are, that appropriate construction should be applied where single-family homes are. And right now, that's not what happened. And moving forward, when I come home from work before the construction was up, it was like this peaceful little spot. No, it's not out in the country, but it's in this great little neighborhood, and that's always what I looked for for myself and my children. And now, when I drive up there, I'm like, the peace is gone because it's more like an apartment complex. And I would never have purchased a home next to an apartment complex, because that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a home community where my children can be, and my grandchildren at some point can be comfortable being in their neighborhood. So, as you know, I am in support of this petition, and I do ask you that you will consider voting yes on our petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? If you could just identify yourself also, ma'am.
Joyce Goslin, 25 Low Street.
Thank you.
And I am in support of this petition. The existing apartments are right across the street, and I just don't want them in my backyard, too. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council?
Michaelia Tenucci, 41 Woodside Avenue. It's a little bit frustrating to put the meeting off another two weeks and get a dissertation from the city solicitor that says absolutely nothing. There's no opinion in there, there's no recommendation in there, which is what everybody was looking for. So, it's a little frustrating to, again, put something off for two weeks to say, "Come back again." And I'm a little concerned, specifically with you, Counselor Dombrowski, because you keep referring to people who might be heard, or people who should be warned, or people who should be told. And it almost makes me wonder if you're representing people who are too afraid to come here and speaking for them rather than judging the petition on its own merits. I haven't heard a lot of opposition. In fact, one of the opposition people has said he's going to build single-family houses there, so that took that away. I haven't heard an outcry of people saying, "This is unfair." And it's almost like, I don't want to say there's something to dodge it, but I hope we get this resolved tonight, and I hope in all good conscience you take a look at it and you vote it the right way. Thank you.
I will respond. The letter from the city solicitor was not asked for to get an opinion or a recommendation. The letter was to give people a summary of the pros and cons for what is a sweeping zoning change. That's the reason for the letter. And if anyone is interested in educating themselves, you can pick up a copy of it. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition?
Ron Dupuy, 20 Sylvan Avenue. Nice to see you all again. While I enjoy your company, I am hopeful, very hopeful, that we can move forward this evening, vote on this petition that looks to keep family, neighborhood, historical effect in place, not to leave in place, something that can really profoundly change the character of our neighborhood. A lot of us have been here for a very long time, and there was a reason we came here. And the newer folks who have come here had a dream, too. Not about a place in the country necessarily, but someplace where it would be good for family and to raise their children. We've heard the, I was very happy to see that we did get that letter from the solicitor. And while I probably didn't understand every word or context involved there, a little further reading I probably will, but I think it's sufficient to say that there is enough information now to proceed with a vote, and I would ask you to do that. And I obviously am in favor of the petition. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time.
Good evening, everyone. We have lived, I've lived in Lemonster a very long time, and we recently moved over on 11th Street. And our big concern is the traffic. When they were working on Mechanic Street, we had a lot of increased traffic in the neighborhood.
Address it, please.
Yeah, if I may, I think that's the next hearing, ma'am.
Oh, they told me that's what this hearing was.
No, no, the next one. But that's okay.
We have several tonight.
Yeah, we've got a bunch.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's the next one. No, no.
No, no problem at all.
You're just warming up that one, that's all.
Okay. Again, is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition?
Hi, my name is Robert Bell. I own 290 Pleasant Street and 296 Pleasant Street. One is a three-family, and one is a two-family. I was actually surprised to hear, I guess maybe I'm the absentee landlord, although I've lived in Lemonster for 31 years. My wife grew up here. I'm at the property, and my brother's at the property multiple times during the week. And my kids are getting ready to be done with school, and within five years, I expect either my brother or I will be living on the property. So, I went through the letter, and I went through the Lemonster Zoning Ordinance book, and I have a few questions. One of them is relative to being rebuilt if there's an issue. In the letter, it said the owner would generally have rights to rebuild if the nonconforming use/structure is destroyed by fire or other unintentional case, and the nonconforming use may also be extended if the permit granting authority approves the extension under certain conditions. So, my question is, if any of the multifamilies that are impacted, I believe there are 11 of them in this group of 30, would a special permit request be needed in order to rebuild? Or is it automatic?
I think if the use stays the same and the footprint of the building stays the same, you can do that as a matter of right, provided you haven't abandoned it for two years. But if you wanted to extend it, perhaps, build a garage, build a shed, and in addition, you might require a special permit. And I defer to Counsel Badanz, I think I'm right, but...
Yeah, I think that's all correct. The key is, is that it would have to be built on the footprint that was destroyed, and it would have to be done, in most cases, it would have to be done within two years.
But you're saying a special permit would not be needed? Because the way that I read this, I was concerned about that.
No, if you were to expand it, so that what you wanted to rebuild was bigger than the original footprint, then you would have to go before the zoning board of appeals and demonstrate that what you intended to do was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what existed prior to the expansion.
All right. The other question I have is, thank you, is relative to improvements. So, if any of the 11 multifamily homes that are in this petition want to do an improvement if it changed over to Residential A, from what I read, it appears as though there are many things that would need a special permit. Right? So, things like putting on a deck. I don't know if re-roofing is an issue is covered. Adding a dormer, adding a garage or carport, or even doing a small entry deck. So, I'm guessing that some of them would require a special permit.
You wouldn't require a special permit to maintain your roof. If you were going to put a deck on it, you would. I mean, I think you'd have a pretty easy time making the standard, but you're right, you'd have to go get a permit. It's an alteration of the premises.
What about renovations inside the house, like new electrical, new heating, new...
No, no special permit would be required. Building permit, but not special permit.
So, with the special permit, and looking in the book, it actually says that you need to submit, you need to do a site context plan, you need to do an existing conditions/light analysis plan. One of the conditions actually said that you may even need to submit a landscaping plan. So, if I want to do a deck, or any of us that have multifamilies want to do a deck, we have to submit all of these to the...
There would be some documentation required in conjunction with the application for the permit, yes.
And there would be a public hearing, correct?
It would be, yes.
So, if residents came and complained or objected to it, it potentially could be turned down?
Again, the standard is whether the proposed use is substantially more detrimental than the existing use. You know, people have the right to be heard, but it's the board's obligation to apply the statutory standard.
In this process, it said something about a 65-day, up to, within 65 days for the first meeting. So, if any of us that have multifamilies that want to do an enhancement to improve the property that needs a special permit, we better start planning months in advance.
It would take some time.
I'm not sure if those of us that have multifamilies are aware of that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, in listening to several of the people in the last two months who have spoken in favor of the petition, even some who don't live on Pleasant Street, and it happened tonight, too, I couldn't help but get a sense that they might be looking at our multifamily homes in a negative way. I hope that isn't the general feeling from most of you and from the council. What's interesting is that most of these homes were built before 1900, so that they have been an important part of the neighborhood for a long time. My brother and I have owned our green three-family for 14 years. It's the old Rochello home. And I've had a lot of people tell me that their family members lived in one of the apartments at some point. Since we've owned the building, we've had several police officers and their families, a college professor, a barber, several social workers, a number of teachers. I've also had many young professionals, including some couples, even older, an older couple who downsized so they could live closer to their children in Lemonster. Many of them eventually purchased their homes, but many have also told me that they cherish their time on Pleasant Street. Having multifamily homes that are well taken care of, and that's an important point, is important for a community. There are many young adults that are getting out of college with tremendous debt, but they also have a lot of hope and potential. Maybe your children and some of the people in the neighborhood, or grandchildren, or nieces and nephews, are at that stage now. It may be a long time before they can buy their home, or buy a home, so they're going to need apartments. I have two children finishing college next month, and one going into college in September, so I'm well aware of the situation. If the petition passes, and for those of us with multifamilies, if it takes a lot of effort and permits and meetings to do even small improvements, you may see a decline in time over the work being done on all of these homes. My brother and I did a lot of work to the TATA II family when we bought it about six years ago. We worked closely with building, plumbing, electrical inspectors to make sure everything was up to code. If the property had changed before that to Residential A, before we bought it, and therefore would have become nonconforming, I doubt that we would have ever purchased and made the improvements that we did. I know the intention behind this petition, and I realize that John and Dorothy have put a lot of effort into it. However, my brother and I are deeply concerned about the impact on all the multifamily owners... owners and our ability to keep the properties in good condition and to make improvements. We have continued, we have continued to invest in the neighborhood for almost 15 years. Please don't punish us as investors and also local resident and other multifamily homeowners for something that an inconsiderate investor did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, anyone else wish to address the council? Third and final time, does anyone else wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Are there any other counselors who'd like to speak? Counsel Frida, I guess I missed you.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Counsel Marsha?
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna have to lead this discussion later on this evening, so just a very quick comment. Last night, between 5:45 and 6:10 p.m., I visited the site. I walked the site. I stood on the front stairs of the house at the corner to the left of the intersection, and I also witnessed the building that they speak of in the backyard. Site plan approval, it was nothing less than a atrocity. It was direct blow on a beautiful neighborhood. It has to be the grossest exemplar of planning I have ever seen in this city. And I just urge my colleagues on the council to support the petition and work with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, I declare this public hearing closed, and we'll take it up later on.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, we've got a hearing, well, we have a hearing scheduled before the City Council. 4118 Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 11, Section 22-60 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation, whole testing for stormwater, infiltration, detention areas. My understanding, Mr. President, is the petitioner wishes to continue this
Correct.
to May 29, 2018 at 6:30. So unless there's any objection, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So moving on, we have another hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is petition 33-18, Dean J. Mazzarella. Change the zoning of eight lots of land from the Residence B zoning district to the commercial zoning district located along the north side of Mechanic Street and the south side of the unimproved portion of Gwendale Street, and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent portion of Gwendale Street. All is shown on a plan entitled, "Plan to Accompany Petition for Zoning Change, Leominster, Mass. Prepared for Dean J. Mazzarella, dated January 10, 2018," by Whitman and Bingham Associates, LLC. And I don't know if the petitioner and his representatives want to join us?
Yes.
Come on in.
Mayor, you and I played phone tag today, apologize.
That's okay. Am I in or you in?
You're in.
First of all, I'm here representing myself, Dean Mazzarella. I'm the property owner and the petitioner. I think everybody's aware of where the location is. Doesn't really have a specific address, but it is on Mechanic Street. Anthony Cleaves with Whitman and Bingham, who is, Whitman and Bingham is representing me way back to the days when they were on Whitney Street, and also from the very beginning of this project when I purchased the land. Just to give you some history, why did I buy this land? What was my interest? What sparked my interest was a letter that was written when a former planning director was leaving, just, just before or about 190 was beginning to open. At the time, he had stated that the city should get ready. This would become a major entrance. This was really the beginning of Interstate 190 as it went through to Worcester. And as you remember, they were opening 190 in sections, didn't open all at once. And what he said is, you know, the city better get ready. This is going to be the economic engine of the area. This is going to be a busy place. And that started my, that started my quest in purchasing properties. There are all different owners in the area. It took me a while to assemble them, but that was about 30 years ago. Anthony, can you just sort of show, put the map, I guess the lot, plot map up there? So as I've owned it for all these years, it's really time to do something with it. On the sand, when the dust blows, I've put, I don't know how many thousands of dollars worth of stone down in that area, try to keep the dust down. As it was a work in, an active sand pit for many years, back 30, 40 years ago, and now the land is clear, it's time to do something with it. What do I do with it? The area is commercial, as you know. It's the gateway to the city. It's the, become now the entrance of the mall. There's a gas station there, two banks, wastewater treatment plant, and landfill is just down the street. The city's trying to market that. We'll show you later where the building is located, but when we located the building, the actual project is actually scaled back. The original project, called for 18,000 square feet, it's been backed off to about 14,000 square feet. The building is pushed all the way closest to the IC credit union, pushed to the front of the building so you don't have to look at the parking and public utilities. So the service area is really in the back of the building, and the parking, as proposed, is really set forth by planning. So we did a combination of retail and office. It could be all office, it could be all, never be all retail, but it could be a combination of the two. So how we come up with those parking spots is really, it's kind of like the mall. The mall is based on square footage and retail, but the mall's probably full a couple of days a year around, usually around the holidays. But that is what's required, and that's how we came up with that. Some of the land, Anthony will show you later, there's a, well, I guess you can show them now, is actually commercial, and it's sort of a weird cut through. If you want to show them, Anthony, I don't know if this is the best plan to show it to them, but it's kind of a weird plan, sort of cuts through. That's already commercial. As you remember, the, this was originally part of the rezoning done by VHB and recommended for the Mechanic Street overlay, and then later on taken out. The, the plan, you know, people would say, well, what are you going to do with it? And I said, well, we've looked at all possibilities. What exactly, something's going to happen, it's going to happen now. I have grandkids, one on the way, and it's time to do something with it. I pay taxes on it every year, and I'm sort of a little bit emotionally attached to it. I've had it for so long, but it's time. What I won't do with it is, if it has changed the zoning, there will be no fast food or any kind of heavy commercial. There'll be no gas stations there. There'll be a really nice project. It'll be well landscaped, well lit. There'll be plenty of flagpoles. My business will go there. The flagpole and our light business and our flag portion of the business, not so much the gift, has really grown. We're probably, if not the largest in New England, we're probably second. So we alternate back for first and second. Most of our business is east of here, and a location near the highway is really critical for us at this particular junction. Again, those are the things that won't go there. What can be built there by right? You could build five homes with five driveways. You can build five duplexes there with 10 driveways. Each, each property in the city is, you can put two driveways. You can do agriculture, greenhouses, you can grow. You can do churches, funeral homes, electrolysis, medical by special permit of the planning board or medical office. And those are some of the things that you can do by right. You can also do condos or apartments, and it was also asked of me, and which isn't really our plan, is could you do 40B, which is sort of the state working with you for affordable housing? The answer is yes, we can, but that's really iffy on, in terms of how many units you can put in there with the maximum space. So if this was approved by the city council, this would go to the planning board. At that time, we'd have much more detailed plan of exactly what the plan's going to be, where the dumpster would be located, air conditioning units. All of that would have to be determined. Traffic, traffic, if the zoning, planning board asks for a traffic plan, we'd have to do that. We have an updated one. I think you've seen when, I think you already saw when Cumberland Farms went to that location, they did a traffic study. So that one's pretty fresh in terms of what the traffic count and the turning parameters are. Anthony, I guess you can sort of fill in here. What we won't do is, and I've heard a number of people say to me, and people going around to the neighborhood telling the neighbors, we're going to run the road up, up into Gwendale Street. That was never a plan. That was never the intention. We're never going to do that. That wasn't a plan. That we were going to build on the top lots near the baseball field. That was never in the plan. That's not proposed in the plan. Anthony, can you take this from there, just sort of?
So as, as the applicant was mentioning, building, the intent would be to push it all the way to the right-hand side, as closest to the existing commercial as possible. Again, is the existing commercial Residence B district line here, or portions of the existing property that we're discussing, is in the commercial? Intent would be to side the building as far over as we can, parking off to the side, and we're trying to, you know, here we've shown about a 50-foot setback of the, the parking to the nearest residential neighbor here. So want to try and give ourselves enough room to, to have some landscaping and a little bit of a buffer between, between the neighbors there. Also by having the building on this side allows us to push the driveway further away from the signalized intersection here at Commercial Road. One access, in and out. It's beyond, if you're familiar with the area, there's a concrete rumble strip median in Mechanic. So beyond that, so you could turn in and out and left and right in both directions. Excuse me. Site distance is, is pretty good on this stretch of Mechanic Street. It's a pretty, pretty good straightaway. You can see probably in excess of 600 feet towards the highway in that direction, to the, to the east, out to the west towards Johnson Street. It's about 500 feet or so you can see, unobstructed. And then there's some vegetation in the way. Before you get to Johnson Street, you can see the Johnson Street intersection. There's a little bit of visibility, obstructed with vegetation, but in excess of the site distance you would need for the speed of this road. And then actually, you can see beyond Johnson Street, about 700 feet as you come down the hill from the center of town. So site distance is really, is really pretty good in this, in this area. The existing signalization at the intersection is a great benefit, is it allows breaks in the traffic. So coming in and out of the property, you get the breaks as, as the lights turn, red and green. So you do have periods of traffic continually flowing through, but then there's a break, a gap, so that you can allow cars in and out. So don't expect that to be a major issue for that as well. And if I can, I have, I present some plans just to give an idea of the zoning of the area. And if you like, I have 11-by-17s of this. If you'd like to have them in front of you as well, happy to pass those out.
Let me just sort of fill in. A number of times, people have said this is going to cause sprawl all the way up to Mechanic Street. Just to give you an idea, most of these lots are 7,500 square feet, maybe 10,000 square feet. In order to replicate just this, and even if the values were $200,000, you would have to pick up about 10 or 15 properties here. I mean, it would be millions to pick up enough properties to be able to build something on. These are all very small lots, and most of mine were, too, 100,000, 10,000 square foot, 7,500. And when you put them all together, obviously it's sizable, but I was buying land. I wasn't buying houses with land. So if, in order for somebody to come even closer to this, to even put enough property together to get a business in here and a driveway and a proper parking, you'd have to buy, as you can see here how small these lots are, you would have to buy eight, 10, 12, 15 lots. So the chances of getting sprawled. The other key thing, I think, is that you can build from 7th Street on down to town, you can have a business. Originally, or, yeah, it doesn't go down to 9th, it goes down to 7th is where the Mechanic Street overlay district is. So you can have a business anywhere on both sides of the street, but you can't have a business here. And I think that's an interesting point.
So again, to reorient yourselves, so zoom out, you have the wastewater treatment plant here. The blue is a, is existing commercial zone, industrial off, as you get closer to the highway, the commercial that comes up Mechanic Street, then you get to the landfill area, mixed-use one. And then we have the residence, residence zone here. The dashed blue line that you see on the handouts in here, that's the area that we're proposing for the rezone to, to commercial. And then the second sheet that you have there is just, just a blow-up of the area. It's overlaid, this is the Leominster GIS overlaid over the aerial photography of the, of the area. So you can see the multiple parcels there and the existing slopes and some of the houses of the neighbors. And then it's a third handout there, it's just a, just a GIS with the zoning taken off, just to give you a better idea to see with all the color on there on where the property is, is located. And then if I can, just some, some point of clarification items that were brought to my attention through some of the previous hearings with the planning board, some, some errors that I had made on our plan that I wanted to point out to the council, so you're aware of that, and also the petition itself. The petition lists, the first sentence of my petition lists eight, eight parcels to be rezoned. And then as you read through the petition, I only really list seven parcels. What had happened was, when I did the original research, this boundary that we're proposing, the way the assessors had it split up, was actually eight parcels. And then when I went to get the butters list from the assessors, they pointed out, actually two of the parcels got combined into one on the assessors' listing, so it's really only seven parcels. And where that was, was this corner lot here. There used to be a division line on the assessors' information right through this area here that had assessors' map 167, parcel 70, and parcel 3. And again, as I mentioned, we were working on this for, for quite some time. And so it was brought to my attention as I was getting ready to submit, made the change really quick to the plans, got rid of that division line, updated my notes here to correctly list the parcels, but unfortunately I didn't change the eight to a seven in the first sentence of the petition. So we're actually talking about seven parcels. One, two, three, four, five, six, and then seven, which the majority of it is already in the commercial district.
And just to restate, that is because two were combined to one?
Correct. So the, the area that we're discussing has never changed. It was this parcel right here, and actually, this was a previous ver, I don't have that plan. There was a division line right here. There were two very small lots. And then, I'm not sure how long ago, but the assessors combined the two lots into one assessed property.
Yeah, I'm not sure why the former assessors combined the properties. I was never notified. I get the tax bills, I pay them, and I still don't, to this day, don't know why the, those two lots were combined. But it's really not relevant to this. It's still the same amount of square footage, the same area.
Yes, I just wanted to point that out. Also, another mislabeling on my part on the original plan that was submitted to the council. I had an errant arrow. This arrow had pointed out into this area here. I didn't snap it to this zone line there, so it could be a little confusing, an arrow pointing out into space. So the intent was never to have the city Leominster parcel rezoned. I had just had an errant arrowhead. It should have gone right here as we show it here. So again, just wanted to, to point that out. And another bit of update is, the butters that you see here were based on butters from probably over a year ago, when I was kind of getting this plan together. Unfortunately, I didn't update all of the butters. Unfortunately, I didn't update all of the butters at the time of submission, as the butters do change over time. So on the plan, it lists Gagney Properties appearing Glendale Street. The applicant has since purchased those properties. So these two properties here are now under ownership of Dean Mazzarella. Not part of the reconfiguration of the zoning. These are already in the commercial zone, not planning on doing anything with those as part of this petition. But again, just wanted to bring that up as it was brought to my attention. And then also, another, another update, the subutter here, down on the bottom right, that a butter has since changed as well. That a butter is now Brendan Cavana, I think is, Kavanaugh, sorry, Kavanaugh. And I had it listed as Claudia DeRosa. Same thing, the butters had changed since we started this plan. So just wanted to bring those up, so you're completely aware of those, those items.
So just to summarize, this proposed project would be our family's project. We're not planning on selling it off if it's, if it's passed. This is the project we'd like to do. This is what we had in mind for years, long before Fidelity put their bank up, long before Cumberland Farms went there. The property was under option by a developer from Concord many years back. Had it on option while they were putting together a plan for an office building. They ended up leaving the city, the whole corporation left the city, and subsequently, the option ran out. And that was probably 26, 27 years ago, it was before I was mayor, and I think even before I was a cop. So it was, it was a while ago. And anyway, that would be the project. This would be a project that has my name on it. This isn't gonna be a project where I'm just gonna look to rent to anybody that wants to come in and rent. This will be a sizable investment in this area. Anthony would tell you the engineering and the construction and stormwater management plan and everything that goes into this is much more comprehensive and much more costly than a residential project. So I think what everyone has to do is sort of set aside their own agenda and look, what's best for the city, and really, what is the highest and best use of this property and this location in the city? Because it's just that time. As I said, I kind of got a little emotionally attached to the piece of land, we've had it for 30 years, paying between $4,500 and $5,000 a year in taxes. And it's just time to do something with it. And economy's gotten better, had little, little to do with it, it's just more timing in life and sort of getting to the point where I was ready to, you know, do something with the property, and now's the time. So had a meeting with the neighbors, met with the neighbors, I don't know, Mrs. Daniels, a year and a half ago, two years ago, something like that. That, at the time, the plan was 18,000 square feet. And again, the big issue was, do something with the property, get all that sand and, you know, cover it up and, you know, put building on it, do what you need to do. So that's it. I think everyone professionally that I've talked to, whether it be real estate people or developers, that have looked at the area, said it's, it's, it's really highest and best use is, is commercial. Again, I got a bunch of options here, right? I do. And, you know, housing is one of them. So I don't know if you have any questions or not. We tried to address everything in the presentation. Again, everything would have to go. If it was passed, everything would have to go back. All the particulars, air conditioning units, where the dumpster goes, lighting, everything would have to go. Traffic, if there were recommendations here for traffic, that would all have to go back to site plan approval by the planning board.
Mr. Mazzarella, is, is the reason that you are requesting commercial versus a business use, is it because of a spot zoning issue?
Yes.
A potential spot zoning issue, if you were to do that?
Right. Even under the recommended, even at first when it was recommended for the overlay district, it was changed later on, only to go one lot back. Well, I guess you could easily get around by just taking it all and put it all in one lot, right? But I didn't want to do that, and so you can only develop the front, you wouldn't be able to do anything with the back. But if the business use, if, if there was some other zoning that applied, that was applicable and better to what we're trying to do, absolutely. Because I personally don't like the commercial name to it, because it sort of implies, you know, when you say "commercial," automatically people think gas station, or a donut place, or fast food, where you have hundreds of cars coming through there. Not at all. That's not my intention, that's not what I want. I could've done that long ago, when there was no gas station, when there was no Fidelity Bank, when, you know, it was just the credit union and the secondary access to the mall was really that access. Now it's flipped over the other way.
Okay.
So if there's another, you know, business B, you know, business B, you can build on every, almost every square inch. So that's not good either. So if there was a better zoning to allow what we wanted to do, because we don't want to do, if there's a light commercial, that would be more applicable to what I'm trying to do here than commercial. Because people will say, "Well, what happens if something happens to you?" Then what happens? Well, in most cases, go back to the planning board if it changes the, the condition of the, you know, if it changes substantially the, the project, you'd go back, because now the parking configuration and all of that would change. So if it reverted from, you know, more commercial and less office, then it would have to go back to the planning board.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd agree to that.
Counsel Freida, any questions or comments? Counsel Badanza, the third member?
No questions.
Do any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Marshall?
Sure. Mr. Mazzarella?
Yes.
Earlier this evening, I made a comment regarding site plan approval failure, as it is today, and what it did in my, in my mind to a beautiful neighborhood off of Pleasant Street. In this particular case here, what plans do you have to be able to protect the integrity of what's around you? So what you have is you have residential, single-family homes, you have homes that are rented, you have a commercial business, the bank, but you also have the Little League Field with city property. And, you know, what pledge do you make tonight? This is not site plan approval, but in your, in your, your idea about developing your parcel, what can we expect you to do to be able to protect the integrity of the remaining butters?
Well, just to let you know, I mean, if this, this doesn't get rezoned, it's not a threat or anything, but I don't want to do housing.
Right.
I don't want to. But, so I probably would sell it, and somebody else would do housing. But if, in this particular case, one thing is, it would probably be the best landscape project in the city. It would have a more of a colonial look to it. The lighting wouldn't sort of be like looking at the ball field where it lights, you can see the ball field from 290. The lighting would shoot down into the area. It would be safe. It would be a nice-looking building. It'd be a great addition to Mechanic Street, to the entrance into the city. And I would screen who those businesses are, who come in, so that it didn't have a negative impact. It would be clean, maintained, properly landscaped, proper lighting, plenty of flags and flagpoles, those sorts of things, with a visual, which is sort of part of my business. Yeah, I mean, it's me. I've held on, this is my baby, I've held on to it for 30 years. I want to see, if I wanted to cash out on this, I built townhouses on Western Bartel, I could've just went down the street and sold many years ago, did the same thing, I would've been out of there. But that wasn't its highest and best use 25 years ago, it's not its highest and best use today. So it would really, I mean, it's got my name on it. I really held out to do a good project.
All right, I, I appreciate that. The parcels that were purchased by Gagney Enterprises are pretty close to abutting the Little League Field?
Uh huh.
So what's the, what's the situation you have with the Little League Field? Would they be able to shag balls at goal of the fence, home runs? Is it a problem? You know, is something that you would work out with them as the, in a partnership? How, how would it work?
Yeah. Let me just reemphasize, because people get the wrong information. This has nothing to do...
I'm just sharing my, I'm not getting information from anyone, but what happens is, you have, you have a liability when this kid's hopping fences going onto your property for a fall.
That's true.
I understand that.
Right.
So what can you do to work with them to...
I always had, even when the scoreboard and they were using the third field, which was on my property, as long as they had an insurance policy naming it, case, you know, and they just listed me, I was fine. That went on for 20 years. That was never an issue until the scoreboard. And even that wasn't an issue, because all we asked to do is, you know, help to move the scoreboard, which later got resolved. So this has nothing to do with it. I don't want to sort of give anybody the idea it does. The ball fields are up here, then another row of properties, then a street, and then the proposed project.
Okay.
And again, some of the butters up towards here were more concerned about running Milton Street through. That was never on the plan. That was never the intentions of running Milton Street through as part of this commercial office. You know, this may end up just being, you know, 80% office. It may not be retail at all. But again, I have to, you know, I've always said to the people who've lived there for a long time, "I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna have a negative impact to your neighborhood." That would be for all the wrong reasons.
That's fear. That's fear answer.
I've always said, for as long as I've owned the property and that anybody's asked me what I'm gonna do with it. And I've had plenty of times, you know, plenty of opportunities to sell it, but I didn't.
All right. Any, any other councilors have any questions? Counsel Cormier?
Good evening, Mr. Mazzarella.
Good evening.
Just to confirm, the, the properties that are up off of the end of Glendale?
Yes.
So there'll be no development there?
I don't, I don't even know if I can put anything on it, to be honest with you. I don't, I mean, it, it's got nothing to do with this.
Okay.
I can't tell you that if something happens to me in, down at St. Leo's underneath one of those granite tombstones, you know, that I don't, you know, it becomes a landing pad for, I don't know, GE. I don't, I couldn't tell you. I, I don't even know if you can build on it. I've never checked. I don't even know. Anthony, I don't even know, we've never looked.
Yeah, we haven't really focused on any of those parcels. Our main focus is the area that we're here for tonight. We haven't really looked at any of that up in that area.
Now, the lower property, the property that's on Mechanic Street, I'm assuming there's gonna be some kind of retaining wall at the back of that property, correct?
Right. Yep.
Yeah, so on the, on the concept plan that we have here, I do show a little retaining wall around a proposed dumpster area. Yep, right, yep.
Right here, this area here. But that doesn't have to go there.
I think, just, you know, in this conceptual phase, we looked at doing that, and to kind of, to get back on a counselor's comment or question about landscaping the neighborhood, another benefit that we have is this site that you see here, is it both 30 feet lower?
Can you tap that on? I don't think you're...
Is it both 30 feet lower than Glendale Street? So, you know, we're already depressed down from the ball field, and so the intent here for now is to have a slope down, and then a small retaining wall in areas that we need to capture that, that extra elevation. And then also, elevation relation to the butter to the west, we're about eight to 10 feet lower than that home as well. So we are lower than, than the neighborhood around us, about the same elevation as, as the credit union next door.
And just, and I, I just bring this up, because this is one of the...
Yes, absolutely.
...the calls that I've gotten.
Yes.
And they're, and a lot of people are worried about, up in Glendale, up on 12th Street, 11th Street in that area, they have been worried about some kind of a cut-through, getting off Mechanic, onto your property, and being able to get up there. So we'd ensure them that that's not going to happen.
It's, it's essentially physically impossible. We have a 30-foot grade change. If you were to try and create a cut-through, you would use the entire property to, to do that safely, so...
There was actually a little, I mean, you could actually, at one point, I took it out so that if something did happen and it ended up at St. Leo's, there was no way anybody could run it up to Glendale Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's, the intent is not, and to not have an access from Glendale Street to the rear of the building either.
And will there be any access between the proposed property and the bank? Will there be any opening between those two properties?
No, they're two separate properties now.
Okay.
Two separate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Feckley, I saw your hand?
Yes, I just, a small question. So maybe I missed at the beginning, Mr. Mazzarella, but you indicated that there were a certain amount of parking spaces that you had to have. So in, when you prepared that to retail, how many retail stores would that add up to?
Well, we figured it out, because we had to put something on there.
Right.
Yes, we have about 8,000 square feet of retail calculated, and about 4,500, 4,600 square feet of office.
But that really depends on, I don't know how much I'll use, I don't know if there's another tenant that might want some other commercial. We won't know that. When we do, is when we get to the final details, that is what will go to the planning board.
And is it gonna be just one floor, or will, will some of it be a little bit higher? You know, like the, the project at the corner of, of Main and North Street? You know, part of that building is a little bit higher than the rest of it?
It's proposed as a one-story building right now.
Okay. So I'm not very good on square footage, maybe you can help me with this, Anthony. Do you know that project on the corner of Main Street and, and North, Route 13 and North Street?
Yeah.
How many square feet?
I'm not sure how large, I think it...
In, you know, in...
Probably a similar...
Similar size?
Probably that one's probably larger, I think.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't want to say...
I didn't work on that project, so I'm not familiar with it.
But comparable? With comparable?
Bless it. It could be. I, I don't want to say yes or no, and then have somebody say you said it was the same and it's not, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's easy to find out, but...
Right, I'll find out. So Counsel Cormier asked you about that sand wall in the back?
Uh huh.
And Anthony, you said there was gonna be a small section that was gonna have retaining, but what about the rest of it? It's gonna be landscaped?
It'd be a slope, it'd be a vegetated slope.
Okay.
Yeah. You'd probably end up, end up planting, you know, something that's easy to maintain, so probably like a wild flyer, a wild flower metal mix, so you don't have to maintain it that long.
Or juniper or something.
Okay.
Crawling juniper or something. That's what's up at Target on that, that whole face that's on Harvard Street. It's all that crawling juniper.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other councilors? Counsel Badanza?
Just a point, and maybe Mr. Cleves can confirm this for me. A residential development generally wouldn't require site plan approval, correct? Wouldn't trigger site plan approval?
It, it depends on the type. So the options available for us...
Five duplexes wouldn't require a site plan?
No, it would, it would be a building permit. So there'd be an A and R plan with the planning board, no public hearings, it'd be by right, we could build five duplexes.
So for example, those three, two-unit duplexes up on Pleasant Street would have been, would not have triggered site plan approval?
No.
But any commercial development with, I think there's a minimum number of parking spaces, right?
There's, there's various criteria for site plan approval. One of them is 10,000 square feet of building, 10 or new, 10 or more new parking spaces, drive-through window, change of view. So in this one, for sure, the square footage and the parking would trigger...
Both, both would trigger site plan approval.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Hodinger?
Yeah, when you were talking about the duplexes, you said there could be potentially 10 driveways coming onto Mechanic Street with those duplexes?
You could, yeah. You know, a lot of times when we have, we have duplexes, you can have a driveway for each, each side. You know, each side has their own, their own space. So each lot would have two, and then you have five lots, that could be 10 potential driveways.
And each residence could have two or three cars, I mean, whatever they wanted, you know, so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The reason, if it was condoed, if it was apartments, then might not need 10, but if they're conged out, which probably would happen, that's pretty much what's happening, is it is each, you don't want to get into who's responsible for the driveway. We used to have those pork chop lots and four driveways, and then after two years, nobody was talking to each other, and nobody wanted to pay to have them block anymore. So we probably would run 10 separate driveways in a duplex.
Anybody else? Any other councilors? Counsel Shalfo Zever?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I, I guess these questions are for Anthony. I guess these questions are for Anthony. So, Milton Street is undeveloped paper street. And is it legal to put parking on it, even though I understand that the bottom part of it, the petitioner is the abutter and owns both sides, but when you get to the top of Milton Street, on the one side of it is the city, city-owned land? So how, I guess, how is it, right, no, up the top, I'm talking about the top part.
We're not going up top.
I know you're not going up top, but I'm saying, can you destroy a paper street, unimproved paper street, that other people have legal access to? And I'm saying by legal access, the city of Leominster.
They do, right through Glendale Street.
Right, so you still, so you, currently you don't really have any physical access from Mechanic Street...
Right.
Up to Glendale Street through this portion. It's virtually impossible. By owning on both sides of a paper street, you know, I'm, I want to play attorney, I'm not one, but, you know, through legal process and by statute, typically you can claim to the center line of a paper street and go through a process to have that discontinued and abandoned.
So that process hasn't gone, been done yet, correct?
Well, no.
To have it abandoned?
Depends what happens with the zoning.
All right.
There would be no, how would you get to the city property from here?
I don't know.
And so, so people, so say the ball field, the city limits, the parcel of land, their only real access right now is from Glendale Street. Which, that's their viable access, and I believe they probably can use that today. Otherwise, you're not going to be able to navigate a 30-foot slope. It looks good on paper, but it's...
This different, this private road, paper road, and paper street, three different definitions, but three different areas. I own to the center of the road here, and there is no getting to anywhere. There's a 30-foot difference here. So you couldn't, unless you had a helicopter or something, you couldn't even get to this, to these, so I wouldn't be depriving anybody from getting to their properties, simply because you can't get to it anyway.
Another question for Anthony. So, thank you for explaining the, the differences between the petition and some of the supporting material, because I was very confused because the assessor's referral that came back did include the city of Leominster parcel up at the top of the hill as being part of the rezoning request.
I didn't see that document.
Okay, well, it was, it was in the assessor's response to us. So I guess my question for you is that, explaining that two of the lots at the bottom, or there used to be two lots at the bottom and now they're one, so there are only seven lots...
Right, and then on my plan and the petition, I expressly, expressly listed each parcel, map and parcel, and that was completely correct.
Okay.
So if there was a misinformation on the city Leominster parcel, I'm not sure of that.
There was definitely confusion about that. So, on one of the maps, I think that listed, where you listed all of the different lots, it's 88,000 square feet, is that right?
So, the 88,000 square feet is the total area, approximate area of the rezoning, which doesn't, it includes more than the lots. As you see the thick black line, it includes half of Glendale Street and half of Mechanic Street. So the 88,000 that's listed on the plan, that's the area of rezoning that we had proposed. The area of the lots themselves, including Milton Street, is about 66,000 square feet.
So the roads account for that other 20,000?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I do have another question about the, the two commercial parcels that were Gagny parcels. And I know that they're not part of this rezoning because they're already zoned commercial, but they're not developable as-is, correct?
I don't know. I have, I never checked. I have no clue.
Oh, you purchased two commercial parcels and didn't ask whether or not they were developable?
No, I don't even know if you could build on them.
All right.
But I, but I want to make sure legally, I'm not, I never petitioned here. This never was part of this. And that's why when somebody said, "Well, why don't you change your name to it?", I said, "Well, first of all, when he did the, the plan, that's whose name was on it." But I don't want anybody to get confused. This was never part, ever, part of the plan, nor is it part of this plan. So, I don't really want to answer questions about this because it hasn't, because as soon as I do it, it starts to look like this is part of the project. It isn't.
No, it isn't, and I understand that because it's already zoned commercial. And that's the problem when things like this come before, is, this is my problem. When zoning has changed from residence B to commercial, you can come down with a nice neat plan, you can talk about the number of parking spaces, you can talk about the access and the one entry and exit, and it sounds great, but we don't approve that. We only approve the change in zoning. So it could be any, any, any use listed in the zoning ordinance book, right? And that's just my point. I understand you're coming down with this nice neat little package, it's a very nice, you know, project, but then, you know, on the other hand, right around the corner, we have all kinds of retail space at the mall that maybe we should be looking at, so. I understand this project, I just wanted to clarify for people in the audience and for people watching at home that we don't approve the project, we just approve the change in zoning.
Right, and as I said to Councilor Dombrowski, there's something else that's more applicable to what I'm trying to do here. Remember, this is self-contained. There'll be nobody crossing the street here to, to get, my, my project has parking with it. There are many commercial projects in the city where people have to cross all day, that's jeopardy of public safety. That's not the case here. Improper lighting, they're not tax generating, they're tax loss for the city. This is going to be a tax benefit for the city in terms of the square footage and what the value of the property will be when complete. So, there are all kinds of, I think, good reasons, and none of this is predicated based on, this is 14,000 square feet. None of it has to do with the mall or anybody else's space in town at all. I, I plan to use some of this myself. That's what started a lot of this, is we're not sure exactly how many square feet we're going to need. And I can't tell you tonight how many square feet we're going to need because we don't know. So, none of that has anything to do with anything else. And if there's more restrictive zoning that restricts us to what I'm saying tonight, I'm all for it. But again, I won't have any part. And again, we've had the council vote down other commercial properties in the past. And I suggest, look at those properties and ask yourself, what are those properties going to become? They're going to become 40B projects. Because you're going to force people into doing projects since there isn't zoning that's applicable to that. So what's going to happen is, what do you do with those properties when there's an old manufacturing building on it, an older building that's used commercially? And then later, the owners retire and there's nobody there, what do you do with those? You can't do what was there before, the zoning runs out in two years, what do you do? You know, so I'm trying to avoid that from happening here by proposing a good project. That's safe for everyone and, and it works in. And again, the neighbors will be involved as we get, before we get to the planning board, they'll be involved in what the building looks like, where the dumpster will go, any issues that they have. And as I said at the planning board meeting and to the neighbors, anybody that wants to come down and stand in the lot at any time of day, watch the traffic, see how much comes by, look at the traffic report that was done by Cumberland Farms. All that information is available, just give me a call and either myself or somebody else will meet you down there. I can't tell you how many times I've been down there, 10 minutes at a time, an hour, Friday night, Saturday mornings. Take a look for yourself.
Any other questions? One more? Okay, go ahead.
One more comment. Right, as part of research that I had done, Mass Department of Transportation did a safety audit of that area from Nashua Street all the way up to Commercial Road. And they did it because it wasn't anything that the city asked for, it was because it was, it's, it's an area that is prone to accidents, there's a high number of accidents, and they looked at it over the course, I think, of three years. And have come up with a short-term plan, midterm plan, long-term plan to deal with all of those accidents of people coming out of Nashua Street, of people coming out of Commercial Road, there are just a number of things. And Mast D O T, and I sent the copy of that around to everybody, I don't know if everybody remembers that, but I did forward that study because I thought it was significant. I think it's a, one of the biggest problems down there, there are visibility things that can be fixed, obviously, but people's speed. And that was one of my big, that was one of my big problems because every time I'm going down the connector heading to Route 2, people are running that Nashua Street light.
Right. And they submitted to you, Cumberland's, a traffic report and speed count for Mechanic and the connector. Connector, the speeds are high, but it's average on Mechanic Street side. The report, I didn't see that copy that you sent to everyone, but...
The Mast D O T, yeah.
Right, but the reason that was done is, is there's a lot of accidents at Nashua, because when people are coming from Nashua from Main and they're taking a right to come down the connector into town, people stop or they don't stop.
Right.
And they look to the left to see if anybody's coming, and the people behind them don't stop. That's underway right now, that, that reconfiguration of that. But that didn't mention, that didn't mention this location here of having any traffic accidents that were...
Not accidents, but just people traveling at high speed.
Well, I think it's easy to...
As they continue down into, towards town.
I don't argue with you, but that data is available.
Oh, it is? No, there's no question about it. And if anybody's interested, I'll, I'll make sure that I forward a copy of that.
Thank you.
D O T study. I'll be happy to.
And that was from Nashua Street to Commercial Drive, or did it go beyond Commercial Drive?
I think it was that block. I think it was really Nashua to Commercial, and then it went a little bit beyond it. That's commercial.
Does anybody have a copy here? We can look at it right now?
I was looking for mine, but I don't have it.
Right, we can look at it right now, because I don't believe it went that far. Did it go that far, Mark, do you know? I don't remember it going that far.
So it stopped at Commercial?
Yes, which is that corner right there. Yep.
Yeah, I don't believe it went after Commercial Road. I think it's, it's before that.
No, I think it, I think it, I went to that corner.
And we're, we're a couple hundred feet.
Oh, Frank, is that it?
Is that it?
I can't see that far. I think it is, yeah, safety audit. I think that's it, Frank.
Yeah. Signalized study of the intersection of Lummester Connector, Nashua Street has been identified as a high crash locations. Doesn't mention on project date or a background information that they studied in the area, just the connector.
I think there were charts in it that talk about where they measured speeds and accidents and sight lines all along that stretch, because it's really dangerous.
It's Lummester Connector.
Right.
And Nashua Street, not, not this proposed area, not from Nashua, not from, from Commercial Road on.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's, it's the traffic that's coming off of Route 2 that's flying by there up Mechanic Street and from Mechanic Street going back down. And it's, it's, it's traffic coming and going along that stretch. And the stretch where they had the most accidents or where they had accidents that were, that resolved, or in this safety audit, happened to be really at Nashua and Commercial Road.
You might want to, you know, consider changing the speed limit there, maybe they're just moving too quick.
Oh, absolutely. People are definitely speeding, yeah, that's in it. That, that's a short-term fix. But there's short-term, midterm, and longer-term fixes that, I think, some are city-owned, some are state, in terms of responsibility and in terms of paying for them. So that stuff all has to get done.
Well, for the next meeting, and I know you're probably not going to vote on this tonight, let me gather the information about what the speeds are on this, in front of this particular piece of property from Commercial Road on, so that way we'll know what the, I mean, I'm getting grouped in with something that's going on before the lights. I'd like to take a look at after the lights and see what the speed limits are there. But I think we can, we can find that out.
It's 35.
35?
I think it's posted at 40.
It's posted 35.
Is it posted at, and then further down, it's posted higher and people still go fast?
When you're driving from the highway, it's posted as 35, and when you're driving from town, the closest speed limit sign is 30.
Okay.
And the other thing, I think, again, it probably won't get voted on, the public hearing might be continued. If it is, I'll bring some pictures next time of, of what you could look at, is what the building would look like. I don't have an exact elevation or rendering, but at least it will give you an idea of what, what we're thinking, what, what the building would look like, maybe that would help you. So you can see that it does tie into the neighborhood, and I think that's what Council Marshan asked us.
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a recommendation from the planning board, which is required, so we will definitely be continued.
Yeah, I, I can comment on, on that. We did have one planning board meeting, and as part of that, the board decided we'd do a site walk, so we did a site walk, so we worked before them again at their next meeting on May 7.
Yeah, they sent us correspondence. Any, any other questions from councilors or comments? Councilor Feckley?
I just wanted to make a comment on what Councilor Shalfo Zepf had indicated we got from the assessor's office. It was a letter dated March 12, and it does clearly list eight properties. So it's map 167, Block 23, Block 10, Block 9, Block 8, Block 7, Block 70, Block 4, and Block 5. So I know you said something, Anthony, about...
Could you, could you list those again slower for me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Block 23.
So 23.
Yeah, Block 10.
Hold on, I don't need 23. So 23 is the city Leominster parcel...
Yeah, that's that lot there.
Which I never listed in the petition and is not listed on my plan.
Yeah, I don't know why they would have that.
So I'm not sure why that was in there. My petition clearly, clearly states all the other parcels.
It's just these two down here that they merged. And when they did that, I have no clue why they did it. They didn't notify, I didn't get a letter in the mail saying we're merging two lots together. I don't have a clue as to why.
Unfortunately, I apologize if my errors in my plan led to some confusion, to lead the assessors providing more confusion. But Lot 23, map 167, parcel 23, the city Leominster parcel was never part of this petition.
Nor, nor could it be.
Right, we don't own it. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we don't own it, so we couldn't build on it. It's not us.
So I apologize if my errant arrow led to that confusion.
That's what probably did it.
You know, but we want to stick with the thick, bold, black line that denotes the boundary of land to be rezoned.
Yeah. Okay, any, any other questions by any other councilors?
Thanks for listening. And again, the invitation is, anytime you want to come down and, you know, physically standing there makes the world of a difference to actually see what goes on down there and the fact that there are plenty of breaks, you know, as a result of the traffic situation.
Man, just to let you know, I did that. I did four different Saturdays in a row. I did one hour each Saturday at a different time. I watched the stack lane, I watched the speeding traffic through the intersection. I saw the stack lane probably go down to Home Depot on Commercial Road because it was a beautiful day, one day, you know, and I'm sure Home Depot was having some sales and I probably ended up down there afterward. Coming down that, coming down Mechanic Street into the intersection, the most cars I saw were four. The stack lane going into the section from downtown Lummester, the most cars I saw in that stack lane were 60 in both lanes, so I just want to share that with you.
Yeah.
So I travel, I travel there at least two to three times a day, and it really doesn't change a lot outside of the holiday season that sometimes, you know, due to good fortune, the mall can prosper, which we all hope.
Right. Okay, thanks for listening.
Mr. President, before I go to members of the public, I just have some correspondence that I'm required to read into the record.
Please do.
I'm going to go in chronological order of the date that we received them. The first one's a letter from the Building Commissioner dated February 15, 2018. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated February 13, 2018, requesting my recommendation on petition 3318 to change the zoning of eight lots of land from the Residence B zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The lots are located along the north side of Mechanic Street, the south side of the unimproved portion of Glendale Street, and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent portion of Glendale Street. I see no issue with these zoning changes as similar deviations were made to allow for the new gas station slash convenience store located on Central Street. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, the Leominster Building Commissioner. We also have a letter dated February 23, 2018 regarding this petition. This is from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Ms. Bouchard, pursuant to the City Council's request, the ZBA reviewed the above petition at their scheduled meeting on February 21, 2018. After discussion, the board made a favorable recommendation on the petitioner's request to change the zoning of eight lots of land from the Residence B zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The board noted they do not consider this proposal to be spot zoning, but rather an extension of the commercial district in existence in that area. If you have any, if you have further questions, please contact me at any time. Thank you. Sincerely, Stephen A. DeCarolis, Chairman. We also have a letter dated February 23, 2018 from the Treasurer, David R. LaPlante.[1575.12] David R. LaPlante. Dear Counselor Dombrowski, in reference to petition thirty-three eighteen, I have checked all of the properties in question owned by Dean Mazzarella, and they have no outstanding taxes or water bills owed at this time. I have no objection to the city changing the zoning. Please let me know if you have any other questions. Sincerely, David R. LaPlante, Treasurer, Collector. We have a letter dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, subject rezoning of Mayor Mazzarella's property. This is from Ed Cataldo. Dear City Council members, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to a scheduling conflict. However, I would like to address the council with regards to the proposed rezoning of Mayor Mazzarella's property on Mechanic and Milton Streets, in parentheses, the Sandpit area. In a Sentinel and Anteplies article dated February thirteenth, Mazzarella referenced a failed attempt to rezone this property in two thousand twelve, stating that I, as the Building Commissioner at the time, argued that the excavation violated a city zoning ordinance protecting roadways, and opinion from the city solicitor refuted this claim, stating Milton Street was not a city road, but an undeveloped private way. First, I'd like to point out that although undeveloped at the time, Milton Street was shown on the city map. What the mayor failed to mention was that after the ruling, I questioned the city solicitor, asking if they were aware of the frontage at the top of Milton Street. The ordinance states that if there is property that has frontage on an undeveloped street, that the frontage must allow pass and repass. The mayor removed Milton Street preventing passage. When I brought this to the city solicitor's attention, they responded by saying that without extensive research, they would be unable to come to a conclusion. At this time, I ask that you please consider this information prior to voting tonight. Respectfully, Edward M. Cataldo. We also have a letter dated March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, and this is addressed to the Lemmister City Clerk. Per section fourteen dash twelve of the Lemmister zoning ordinance, the attached document serves as a written protest against the zoning change proposed in petition thirty-three eighteen. And this is submitted by Peter Latches, and he further notes reference to fourteen twelve. No zoning ordinance may be adopted or changed except by a two-thirds vote of all the members of the City Council. If there is filed with the City Clerk prior to final action by the City Council a written protest against such change stating the reasons and duly signed by owners of twenty percent or more of the area of the land proposed to be included in such change, or if the area of land immediately adjacent extending three hundred feet therefrom, no such change of any ordinance may be adopted except by a three-quarter vote of all members. And again, sincerely, Peter Latches, twenty-two Demossi Drive, Lemmister, Mass. And he submitted essentially a petition purporting to have a hundred and nine signatures. Also have a letter dated March twelfth, two thousand eighteen. This is from the Chief Assessor, William Mitchell, regarding this petition. Dear Legal Affairs Committee members, I have reviewed the proposed change of zoning for eight lots of land located on Mechanic Street and Glendale Street. According to the petition, Dean J. Mazzarella is requesting a zoning change from Residence B to Commercial on eight lots known to the assessor as follows. Map one sixty-seven, block twenty-three, and indicates owned by City of Lemmister, Glendale Street. Map one sixty-seven, block ten, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella, Glendale Street. Map one sixty-seven, block nine, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella, Glendale Street. Map one sixty-seven, lot eight, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella, Glendale Street. Map one sixty-seven, block seven, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella, Glendale Street. Map one sixty-seven, block seventy, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella. Three ninety-eight Mechanic Street is the location of that one. Map one sixty-seven, block four, owned by Dean J. Mazzarella, Mechanic Street. Map one sixty-seven, block five, Dean J. Mazzarella, four sixteen Mechanic Street. The assessors throughout Massachusetts are required to assess properties by their current use. All eight parcels are currently being assessed as potentially developable residential land, except map one sixty-seven, block seventy, known as three ninety-eight Mechanic Street. Three ninety-eight Mechanic Street has a flower stand structure on the property and periodically sells plants and flowers. That use is considered retail and has been taxed commercially since fiscal year two thousand fourteen. I have attached a map defining the area in question for your convenience. The rezoning of these eight parcels would extend the Commercial District along Mechanic Street approximately three hundred fifty-three, three hundred fifty-three feet. It should be noted that the abutting parcel is zoned Commercial and is currently being utilized as a bank. The property next to that is the entrance to Whitney Field Mall, and the property opposite that is the Cumberland Farms. And if you have any questions or need additional information, please feel free to contact me directly. Sincerely, William B. Mitchell. Mr. President-
If we can pause for a moment. By law, we have to begin our City Council meeting, so will you all please stand and join me in a salute to the flag as we open the meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
The meeting for April twenty-third is now in session. We'll begin with the roll call vote, begin with the honorable members of the council, beginning with Counselor Frida.
President.
Counselor Dombrowski.
President.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Bonanza.
Present.
Counselor Ottinger.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
All nine members are present. Does the Chairman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular City Council meetings of March twenty-sixth and April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and the minutes of the special council meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Are there any questions on the minutes? So move, do I have a motion to recess? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr seconded.
Second.
Those in favor, those opposed. We're now recessed. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue reading the correspondence relative to this matter. We have a letter from City Solicitor Brian Riley dated March twelfth, two thousand eighteen. This one is addressed to Council President Marshand. Rick, I am responding to your attached request for an opinion. In my opinion, notwithstanding that the attached petition was submitted on the official petition form, it does not propose a measure that the City Council may adopt, and therefore, I recommend that the petition be considered as an expression of public opposition to petition thirty-three eighteen, rather than a submission requiring referral to a council subcommittee. I understand that petition thirty-three eighteen proposes the rezoning of certain property on Mechanic Street from a residential district to a commercial or business district. The planning board has scheduled its public hearing on petition thirty-three eighteen, and the City Council will subsequently hold its own hearing and vote on the petition as required by both section twenty-two fourteen of the zoning ordinance and Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five. Petition thirty-three eighteen is clearly a measure, as that term is used in the city charter, by proposing a change to the revised ordinances. By contrast, the attached document, signed by one hundred nine individuals, only expresses the signer's opposition to petition thirty-three eighteen and states the reasons for that opposition. It does not ask the council to adopt an ordinance, approve an order, or resolution, or otherwise act in any manner. As such, this does not seem to propose a measure requiring City Council action. Moreover, it does not contain enough signatures to constitute an initiative petition under section eight-one of the city charter. This section also provides an avenue to propose a measure. Moreover, it would serve no purpose for the council or a council committee to conduct a hearing on the attached petition and then vote on it, as the council is already legally obligated to conduct a hearing and vote on petition thirty-three eighteen. And the attached document merely expresses the signer's opposition to that petition. It appears that the two thousand eight petition was similar to this new one, and it was withdrawn rather than being handled as a petition proposing a measure. In my opinion, the attached document should not be treated as a petition requiring City Council action. In my further opinion, it would be appropriate to maintain the attached document as part of the public comment on petition thirty-three eighteen and as part of the record of the council's public hearing, as the council would with any letters or emails that are received expressing an opinion on such a petition. If you have any further questions in this regard, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Brian W. Riley from KP Law. We then have a follow-up letter dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen from Brian Riley to Counselor Marshand. Hello, Rick. I understand through Amanda Alfred that you had asked me to plan to come to the April twenty-third City Council hearing on this petition, and I have that on my calendar. However, I believe a primary question that is anticipated concerns the required quantum of vote that the council will need to approve the zoning change. Should it wish to do so? I sent an earlier opinion regarding a petition expressing opposition to petition thirty-eight eighteen that was received, and whether that petition was required to be considered as a measure or given a hearing, et cetera. I am now informed, however, that it was verified that a certain number of the petition signers own property that is located within three hundred feet of the edges of the parcels to be rezoned. Some additional parcels that are located within this radius are owned by the city. I have also attached a map created by the Office of Planning and Development regarding this issue. The map indicates that the owners of parcels within three hundred feet of the proposed rezoning that also signed the petition represent three-point-six-eight acres or twenty-six percent of the so-called buffer area surrounding the subject property. As a result of this, it is my opinion that approval of petition thirty-three eighteen and so amending the zoning map for these seven parcels that are subject to thirty-three eighteen will require a positive vote of three-fourths of the full council or seven members. The Zoning Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, provides in part, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw or amendment thereto shall be adopted or changed except by a two-thirds vote of all the members of the town council or of the city council where there is commission from, where there is a commission form of government or a single branch, or of each branch, whether there are two branches, or by a two-thirds vote of a town meeting, provided, however, that if in a city or town with a council of fewer than twenty-five members, there is filed with the clerk prior to final action by the council a written protest against such change stating the reasons duly signed by owners of twenty percent or more of the area of the land proposed to be included in such change, or of the area of the land immediately adjacent extending three hundred feet therefrom, no such change of any such ordinance shall be adopted except by a three-quarters vote of all council members. In the usual case, a vote to amend the zoning ordinance requires a positive vote of six councilors, a two-thirds vote of all members of the City Council. As stated at the end of this paragraph, however, if a petition in opposition signed by the owners of at least twenty percent of the adjacent area within three hundred feet of the proposed change, this serves to raise the necessary vote to three-quarters of all members. In Lemmister's case, this means that instead of six positive votes, it will require seven positive votes to approve the rezoning under petition thirty-three eighteen. This does not necessarily mean that all nine councilors must be at the meeting, but seven must vote in favor to approve the change. If you have further questions, please let me know. Very truly yours, Brian Riley. And finally, we have a letter dated April third, two thousand and eighteen. This is from the Director of Planning, Christine A. Kelly, to Lynn Bouchard, the City Clerk. And this is just informing us that the planning board continued their public hearing to May seventh, due to the site visit that Mr. Cleaves had initially talked about. Okay. Do any councilors have any questions or comments on the written correspondence?
Just, if I may, for confirmation, the vote will be the super vote at the end of the day.
That's what the opinion says.
Okay, so that's what, so that's very clear this evening.
Seven votes. Counselor Frida?
Just to reiterate, what's even more clear is that we're unique in our charter, that it's the full council, whether the councilors are here or not. It has to be nine out of the nine votes, whether some of us are missing, so.
To be even more clear, I think I could have summarized Attorney Riley's letter in a paragraph. We'll go to members of the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Mr. Cool, okay, if you could just identify yourself for anybody.
Yes, Dave Gagny. Unfortunately, I live in Pittsburgh. But as a third-generation business owner here in Lemmister, I like to tell people, born here, raised here, die here, that we take great pride in our projects that we've done over the past few years, what my late father Edward, my grandfather Clarence, some of you knew. And it's nice to be able to sit back at the end of the day and if, not brag, but if someone asks, is that your project? And to be able to say, yes, it is, as we've recently done with the One Ten Grill down in Seastown. I still call it Seastown. But as the mayor pointed out, he's owned this property for over thirty years. It's something that he'd like to own for another thirty years and pass on maybe to his kids or grandchildren, and be able to step back at the end of the day and say, if someone asks, yes, that is mine, and be proud of it, like a proud parent. And I feel that this would just continue on what is already, as mentioned, in the area between the Fidelity Bank, the Cumberland Farms, the IC Credit Union, things like that. And as the mayor pointed out, he's, has options that he could do, and he does not want to do many options that he legally can. As we did over the years ourselves, we've turned down many projects, waiting for that right project. We had, for example, for the One Ten Grill site, as you know, there was a trucking terminal there, and we had offers of an auto parts store, self-storage, a major tool company that ended up locating on the John Fitch Highway, Harbor Freight Tools, things like that. And each time, they were willing to pay the rent we were asking, and my dad and I just, no, that's not why we did this. And I see that in tonight's petition with Mr. Mazzarella, that he's had options, and he's waited for that one right project, and he feels that this is it. So just, I speak in favor of his proposal, and I think it would just complement what's already there and be a nice, clean gateway into the city. And I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Is there any other member of the audience?
Good evening, councilors. Joseph Quinn, three ninety-one Union Street, here in Lemmister. Here this evening to speak in favor of thirty-three eighteen. I encourage you to vote on the positive for it. Certainly, I live in South Lemmister, but that is a gateway to the city of Lemmister, traveled by many of the people, I'm sure, here tonight. I know I've traveled it on numerous occasions. And that empty lot has been an eyesore for years. And with all the expansion of the commercial area over there, I think it's certainly in tune with what could and should go there is a piece of commercial property. Certainly, the owner is ready to build, certainly willing to spend significant money here in Lemmister. It's a Lemmister resident. And so, since I don't live in the French Hill area, which is a wonderful area, single-family homes, multifamily homes, commercial properties, but traveling back and forth through Mechanic Street onto the Avenue of Flags or the connector, I think that area needs to be built up. And so, I will end my two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council in favor of this petition? Second time, anyone wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council in favor of this petition? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council in opposition to this petition?
I would. If I come in, I could hang you up.
Sure.
My name is Peter Latches, twenty-two Demossi Drive. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. This is the map that went with the petition. As you see, it's planned to
accompany the petition for zoning, the same map that the petitioner put up. Now, I'm going to address the two Gagny properties. The two Gagny properties were bought six months before the petition went in. At the planning board down at the Sandpit, I asked Mazzar, I asked the petitioner about these lots. Are you going to finally admit you own them? And he said, I don't have to. My point is, he don't have to tell me, but he's going to tell the council, because this is part of the petition, and it's right there in plain sight, and the council should know that those two properties were bought by him. He signed a petition saying that he acknowledged, he read it, he looked at it, and everything looked okay, knowingly, he wasn't transparent in that action. I think it's very wrong of him to do that. The other thing is, we brought out the mistake of the line going right up to the city property. What I find amazing is-
Peter, can you just say who's "we"? Can you identify who "we" is?
Me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Huh?
He's with you, he's with you.
Oh, he's with you.
Oh, yeah, no, no, just-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, they, after we brought it to their attention, they said that was a mistake. But what I find amazing is, which was brought out at this meeting, was, when you read the petition, this is when I first caught it, I said, let me sit down and read this and make sure I'm right. When I read it, I noticed seven, and it said eight. So it's ironic that they pointed to that lot. And, let me see, I have it right here. The building inspector, in February fifteenth, a month later, he says, he's in receipt of a communication dated February thirteenth requesting his recommendations on petition thirty-three eighteen to change the zoning to eight lots of land to Residence B to Commercial. And he said it's okay. This is the map he's looking at. He's okay in city property. He's supposed to deny it. Now, you go to the, a month later, March twelfth, you got the assessors, the assessor stating the eight lots, and one being the city of Lemmister. And he reviewed the eight lots, and, he just reviews it. He doesn't make a statement on it. Now, that's two, that's two departments. I'm going to show you another map. Now, that's two departments. I'm going to show you another map. This map you don't have. This is from Christine. She's the Planning Director. And she was trying to figure out how many people were within 300 feet of the proposed development. And when I walked in, this was on the table, naturally, it's smaller. So I said, "Read the petition." I said, "How many lots?", she said, "Seven." I said, "Where's the eighth one?", she pointed to the city property. So here's the Planning Director, the Planning Board, and the assessor's office, all agreeing that that city property was the lot. Not anybody mentioned, "It's city property. You can't do it." I think it's amazing. What's wrong with the city? What's going on? And I think everybody's being misled. I think if the council voted for this, that might be commercial today. How many councilors would have checked on it? That's my point. Now, I had a lot of hard times trying to get the seventh vote, because there's no such thing as a circle. It's only abuddists that were within 300 feet. They canceled the proposal, and they counted the whole, this whole circle against the abuddists. Fifteen acres. She said, "I missed it." It's not, that's not the way to do it. And I got some email. "The assessor's office explained to me that the signs must represent 20% of the area of land proposed to be rezoned. But I've heard that it is 20% of the total land, 300-feet Buffy area." I'd like to know who told the Planning Director this, because the assessor's office is right, that it's, that it's, "The signs must represent 20% of the area of land proposed to be rezoned." Okay? So it's the abuddists, 20%, against the proposed zoning. And I think before you vote on this, find out which one is right. Because it's state law that says about the zoning and the percent of landowners. After they cut that out, the city lot, I was within, I think, 26%. But I think I'm way over. I think I'm over 100%. So that should be correct before you vote on it. Another thing, they sat in here, and they mentioned 88,000 square feet. I've had some people look at it that know what they're doing. And I've got old maps to give the square footage. And I think before you vote on it, you better know where the 88,000 square feet are, because the calculations don't come out right. I have the old assessor's map that would describe the two lots over here. It's 100 by 100. That's 10,000. The street is 8,000. It's 40 by 200. The next two lots are 60, 60 by 100, both. That's 12. That's 20, 30, 40, 45. Well, if you count half of Glendale Street, it's 5,000. Then the other, the others are 12 and 10, but the commercial line runs through. So if you do the math, they're about 10,000 chart. If you look up there, it represents Glendale Street. So I think the plan was to buy those two Gagny properties that are undevelopable. He's got something in mind buying those. Why do they want to rezone city property? Because now he can say he owns both sides with commercial property on each side, and maybe take more land. I think the project is bigger than they said. And I noticed today, he keeps mentioning his projects getting smaller. One time it was 18,000, then it was 12,000. Tonight, I'm not sure, I think he said it was 6,000. So he keeps changing. And yeah, he said a great thing. If people, if he sells the property, sell it to another developer, let him put housing. That's what the people want. This is an old street, Mechanic Street. Across the street is residential. Right next door is residential. The land he wants to develop is residential. It should stay residential. The people don't want it. That's why when zoning came in, that's why it's seven votes, because it's very serious when you change zoning on people. I've met a lot of people down there. They're very nice people. They're very upset, and they want you to take this serious. Okay? So I appreciate it. But please, before you vote on it, probably get somebody, get the assessor to rezone, and give you the square footage of each lot. Because every councilor here, and I didn't know until, I had somebody really look at it that knew what they were doing. And the point is, it's easy to say 88,000 square feet. None of you know how much that is, or where it goes. I do. I know it's outside. I know it's a lot extra. Okay? So it's a good idea to ask the assessor to put the square foot on each lot and each street, and know exactly what you're voting for. And please, make sure you check on what constitutes a three-force vote. I think the assessor was right. 20%.
Peter, that's already done.
What do you mean?
As it's completed, we're voting on the super vote.
I know you're voting on the super vote, but I got it both ways. I want it either way. I want it around the circle, and I want it the other way. But you might as well find out what state law is. The assessor made two different assumptions.
We have a ruling back from the city solicitor, so we'll comply with that. That's a super vote.
Yeah, I know it's a super vote. Does he agree that it's 20%? It's not a circle. It's not the area.
No, he agrees that we need seven votes. Yeah, we read that into the record.
Yeah.
I know. But does he agree that it's a radius? Or did he just say it's within 300 feet? I read you with distinction.
Yeah.
Kristin was...
I mean, I think it's semantics to some extent. We've got to have seven votes.
Well, no, it isn't, because Kristin went her own way. She said, "I've never done it before", and she did the circle. The assessor said, "It's not a circle. It's just go and see who's within the radius."
We'll clarify the proper, the proper way to measure it. We can do that.
I mean, what I'm saying is, you shouldn't just keep going and not know what the state law is.
Okay.
Well, just so you know, for the record, that I asked the city solicitor to be in contact with both respectful people and offices to make sure they were all in compliance with the decision that they ran to the council.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Talk about the people who route, what to. They're very nervous about, you know, traffic in the future. They know they're in a heavily traveled area, but they're very much against commercial property coming out onto Mechanic Street. Will be really chaotic. The point is, why would you, why would you vote against the abuddists? And why would you vote against thousands of people that use that as a gateway? You call it a gateway? Why mess it up? You got, we got plenty of retail stores. You can put that in commercial property. You've got tons and tons of commercial property. There's no sense of ruining something. I know you've ruined, you know, over the years, not you, but the city has ruined 13. It's ruined going up Mary Nav. You can't get up there. There's too much congestion. The roads are clogged. And where I live, Watertown Plaza, you can't even go up. I haven't gone up my street in 22 years, because they put the intersection off. When they dump something and they make it wrong, it stays forever. Commercial's forever. You've got to remember, once they put that in there, somebody's going to drive by in 30 years and say, "Who the hell did this?" Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Latchis. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to speak in opposition?
My name's Dave Nelson, 12th Street, here in Leamester. I think this is a bad idea, making this commercial. The traffic down there, you don't live there. You don't try and get out the end of that street, on the Mechanic Street. Some days, you're better going up the hill than down the hill, because the traffic is terrible. I know you said that. You've seen it, and it's so many cars. You've got to sit there and pay attention to it. A lot of my neighbors are here. They can attest to it. The road is deteriorating, and if we get more traffic up through there, like when they did the bypass there, my neighbor's fence got run over. The road's deteriorating. It's not a pretty thing. They come up that road 100 miles an hour. They don't care if there's kids there. You put speed signs, it doesn't matter. They're still going to do it. They're going to come up there a million miles an hour. As far as the gateway coming in, I'm all for it. Beautify it. Put some flowers there. We don't need empty or half-empty commercial buildings down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Come forward, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sandy Hapgood, and I live on 11th Street. And the traffic that he was talking about is outrageous. No matter what is done down near that intersection, when they built Cumberland, when they built Fidelity, when they changed the lower end of Old Mechanic Street, the traffic that comes up through the neighborhoods is... I thought I was living on Route 2 when they redid Mechanic Street. They complain about an elevated crime rate in that lower area. Well, what it, a lot of what it is, is that unknown people coming into the area, casing the houses. There is another factor that's bringing non-residents into the area to stay temporarily. And there's where your crime is. We've got to the point where if we need to get out onto Mechanic Street from 11th Street, we go up to 8th Street. It's almost impossible. And he was talking about, you can't get out the end of 12th Street. We come up that way. The speed of the traffic is beyond belief. I live down near the water street end of 11th, in that midsection. And there's a stop sign at the bottom of the hill. The number of tire screeches and rubber marks coming up to that stop sign is phenomenal. I mean, it looks like some NASCAR raceway track with the rubber that laid out. There are kids that play in the street on the dead ends and in-between. There's kids that play in driveways with basketballs, and, you know, they're running out in the street after the balls. The people that are traveling at non-normal rates of speed for a residential area have almost hit these kids. It's just, the traffic issue is huge, and you add additional commercial, and it's going to get worse. The other issue is that bank in behind the two properties in what's called the sandpit. I have watched the bank in from the top come down and wash into Mechanic Street. And he's talking about a small retaining wall? There has to be a whole lot more than a small retaining wall to prevent that sand from coming down, because much more of that sand comes down, and we're going to lose the baseball field up there. And that's used almost every night in the summertime. So those are two, I mean, I think he's got a beautiful plan for what he wants to put in commercially. But I think these are extenuating actions that are going to happen as a result of him putting that property in there with commercial use. It's going to complicate the traffic down at the intersection, and it's going to make traffic up on the numbered streets worse. You know, it's, like I said, they were building the bank, which had nothing to do with Mechanic Street. It had to do with the rubber neckers. And then the people would turn and come up 12th Street and try 11th and 10th, 9th, to get out of there. I mean, one day, when they were doing Mechanic Street, I was kind of chuckling, because this one poor woman in an SUV with a load of kids circled the block five times before she figured out how to get out of there, because of all the dead ends and the way they had the detour signs up in there. It's just going to make matters worse. And, you know, when we moved into an area that we thought was going to be quiet traffic. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and hopefully he'll consider these additional factors when he's getting ready to build his property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council in opposition to this petition? Please come forward.
Apologize, I'm reading from the laptop. In the absence of a traffic study, I took the liberty of going up to the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission and giving each and every one of you a copy of the Cumberland Farms traffic study.
Turn your mic on, please.
And Mr. Knatchia, we all know you, but if you could just identify yourself.
Okay, sure. Tom Knackia, 315 Jocelyn Street in Leamester. I'd like to give you a copy of the Cumberland Farms traffic study from 2015. It's not particularly exciting reading, so please don't feel like you need to rush through it. So I would like to share some information with you from the traffic impact study for the Cumberland Farms project at the Mechanic Street Connector location. The study was performed by Greeman Peterson out of Wilmington, Mass. in August of 2015. An important note is that the traffic volume numbers are actually seven-year projections in accordance with state regulations, so they reflect what the intersection will be like in August of 2022. So the numbers that I'm talking about from the traffic study also include a 1.3% annual increase in traffic volume for the same seven-year projection period. So according to that particular traffic study, the daily volume of cars in August of 2022 is projected to be 29,450 vehicles per day total in both directions, Monday through Friday. The Saturday daily volume is projected to be 26,040 vehicles, again, eastbound and westbound. You'll find that information, as I have identified on the top of the chart. I believe it's on page six. Excuse me, page four. The most recent data from the Leamester Police Department showed 33 crashes at that intersection from 2010 to 2014, so a full five-year period. 16 of those accidents were cross-angle or angle collisions. 16 were rear-end collisions, and one was unknown. The Mass Department of Transportation also did a five-year study, full five-year study from 2009 to 2013, and recorded 35 car accidents, so fairly consistent. The intersections in traffic studies, this was new to me, are assigned six levels of service. They rank from Level of Service A, the definition being desirable conditions with little to no delay, to Level of Service F, where travel rates exceed the capacity of the intersection. In 2022, the Mechanic Street Connector and Commercial Road Intersection is expected to operate at an overall level of service D, where congestion becomes more noticeable, yet delays are still within an acceptable range. However, the level of service is predicted to be ranked Level E during the weekday afternoon peak hours, so prime commuting time from between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. So Level E represents, and this is a quote, "high delay values and is considered by many agencies to be the limit of acceptable delay." Level E means a delay of no less than 55 seconds, but no more than 80 seconds. The traffic volume, car accidents, and delay times I just shared with you are projected to be with us in four years. And that is with keeping the sandpit zoned as it is. as it is today, Residence B. Zoning it commercial, whether it remains a strip mall or perhaps in the future is turned into a five-story office tower, 120 parking spaces, change the footprint. And that is a possibility by right is going to make a bad traffic situation chaotic and dangerous. The residents of Ward 2, met many of them, wonderful people. They are deserving of peace in their backyards, safe driving at the end of their streets. And I sincerely hope you will vote against the petitioner's request to rezone his lots commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition?
Good evening. I am, my name is Mel Austin. I live on 12th Street, right across from Glendale Ave. I've been here since 2002. And as the progress on Mechanic Street has progressed, it's way too much traffic. And now I have to leave my house, go up 12th Street, and catch on Mechanic Street at 9th. Because the Johnson Street cars come off there and, you know, get on Mechanic. So it's just way too difficult. And as the other person said, people speed up 12th Street now. And they don't even know where the hell they're going half the time. And, I mean, I have no problem with someone trying to make money. But, please, not at our expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council in opposition to this petition?
I wasn't planning on talking. But my name is Ronnie. Ronnie Who? I live in Ward 2. I live on 6th Street. And what prompted me to talk tonight is regarding traffic. It's not fit for human beings to walk along Mechanic. Even if you ride a bicycle. Dave saw me today pedaling. I challenge you guys to go pedaling on Mechanic Street. I challenge you to watch what happens. You get beeped off, you can get... I know, because I've been beeped off and I'm minding my own business. You change the zoning? It's on your, it's on your neck. Not mine. Yes, I was born in this city. And traffic is getting bigger. Sometimes you can't cross 3rd Street to get across to go to Victory.
Yeah, absolutely.
When is this gonna change? Yes, it's all in the name of progress, 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 the sanctity of progress. But at whose expense? I've seen a lot of change on Ward 2. There will always be some change. There will always be some collateral damages. But I'm here to tell you, on Mechanic Street, on Water Street, it is dangerous to try and walk. When the sidewalks are filled with snow and you're trying to walk on a street, it is dangerous. When you're pedaling your bicycle, even driving your car, you are taking your life in your own hands. Again, I tell you. You don't believe me, go ahead, don't believe me. But I challenge you guys to ride their bicycles on Mechanic Street. Let me see what happens. Let me see the look on your face. You don't have to listen to me. In fact, I don't want you to listen to me. I want you to see it for yourselves. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Who. Anyone else?
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street. And in response to one of the questions that was asked during the petitioner's comments, he said, "This is really about what's best for the city." So I questioned, is it really about what's best for the city? What's best for the neighbors or best for the petitioner? The petitioner didn't put this petition forward until after he moved out of our neighborhood and out of our community. It doesn't impact him on a daily basis. It impacts every person in here who lives on French Hill and has been at multiple meetings and said, "We don't want it." Who's put our name and our John Hancock on paper in a petition to you and said, "We don't want it." What more do we, as immediate residents, need to do to say this is an appropriate development for our community that is rapidly expanding while we have kids that are trying to create neighbors and relationships when they can't walk across the street to see a child or a friend because you can't cross the street? So I just encourage you to please listen to the neighbors who are there on a daily basis, who know their neighborhood and have an investment in it and want what's best for the people that are living there.
My name is Deb Cossey and I live at 283 Mechanic Street. A lot of people have brought up the traffic and the fast traffic coming up the street. And I live at the top by Mechanic and Viscaloid. And I go down the connector and go up to my neighborhood every day, multiple times a day. The problem I have is the location that the petitioner is talking about. There is, you come across the intersection coming into Lemonster and there are two lanes that rapidly go into one lane. And I have been more times than not almost run off the road because the people on the right side think that they're, that they have the right way. And so you have an awful mess of cars trying to cross each other at that particular point. And if you add a commercial building to that spot, you're adding a lot more chaos to that situation. So adding commercial to that residential area that is already having problems with the high-volume traffic and the speeding cars, well, you also have the problem of trying to come through that intersection as those two intersection, as those two lanes cross each other. We are backed up through that intersection. The chaos that was already talked about for the Cumberland Farms study, that's already proven a fact that cars trying to come through that green light are stopping because of the mess right there. So we have an automatic traffic problem before we add a commercial building to that spot. Also, the petitioner brought up, he wants to beautify that area, to make it nice in that, to give the presentation from the connector area of the city, coming into the city, that he would put the building right up against the credit union. But everything facing the residential areas, looking down on it, from it, it's all parking lot. How beautiful is a parking lot? It is not. You cannot cover that with landscape. That is a big, ugly mess of concrete. So I wanted to point that out also. We have a traffic problem. We have a beautification problem. And I have a problem with waiting 30 years to make a very big eyesore, something profitable for one person. That's what I have a problem with. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council in opposition? Come on, Rita.
Hello again. Rita Sheridan on 12th Street. I'm going to agree with my neighbors. Again, traffic is definitely a factor. I want to bring up another point in that regard. The ball field during the summer, we have a lot more traffic that does affect that area as well. The gentleman who did the traffic study or brought forth the review of the traffic study, I don't know if they even incorporated any of that additional traffic. Mechanic Street was recently redone. Looks great. It's nice to travel it. Unfortunately, it's, I think, been sidelined for the side streets. 12th Street is hugely pitted right now. And I'm sure, you know, the city will get around to paving, hopefully, the rest of the French Hill streets as well. But it is very, very frequent. I know Mr. Marchand said that he went down and watched the traffic flow. For all of us who've experienced it day in, day out, several times a day, when you are on those side streets trying to get out onto Mechanic Street, it's virtually impossible. The wait time at the lights is definitely going to be much more impacted. And I just really hope that you take that all into consideration. We do want our neighborhoods to stay that neighborhood quality and safety for the kids. There is a huge, huge safety issue. I think 12th Street should actually be parking one way because of the ball field issue, but that'll be another issue. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council in opposition? Second time, does anyone else wish to address the council in opposition? I'll bring it back to the council.
I actually have a letter from a constituent that they asked me to read.
Okay, I'll, yeah, we'll get that after. There's one more person? Oh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Brian Teszner, 705 Mechanic Street in Lemonster. I speak before you again this evening to speak in my opposition to this zoning change. And I won't bore you with a long history about how I grew up on the corner of 12th and Mechanic and how the neighborhood has changed over the 63 years that I've seen it. What I will ask for you to consider is this. You've heard from these good people who've come before you, take time out of their lives to say why this isn't such a good idea. And it's not really hard to think about it in terms that they would represent. They have no fiscal representation here to make this change. In fact, quite honestly, most of them have been here for a long time. This is their home. You, as the council, have the opportunity to prevent what I think was referred to earlier this evening as an extension of commercial zoning. This is Residence B neighborhood and it has always been. Most of these people, the residents, cannot pick up and go someplace else. Where they have roots, they sit, they stand, they raise their family. The traffic, with all respect to folks that have been down there, a week ago Monday, I sat at three separate occasions in the bank and counted the traffic that went both ways. And I'll just throw a couple of numbers out at you. Between 9:30 and 10:00 in the morning, there were 620 cars that passed in front of me. 12 to 1 that day, 1,600 cars, thereabouts. And from 3:00 to 4:00, about 1,400 cars. Now just let that sink in for a minute. So if you're having dinner or lunch on the corner of 12th and Mechanic, you only have to listen to the drone of 1,600 cars in that hour. 1,600 cars. Okay? So, I'm here just to pay a word so that to get all of you in the same room is actually pretty good, so I have to play telephone tag. Who speaks for these people? You do. Who protects their interest? You do. Somebody once said that politicians never act out of conscience. They act out of consequence. But we'll see. Because if conscience were the reason to vote today, don't abandon these people. They have no voice. They have no gift to come up and present. With apologies for my own lack thereof. But somebody has to speak for them. Somebody has to remind you all that this has a face. It's very real. How many more cars can go up Mechanic Street? How many? Does that improve their lot in life? No, it doesn't. I'm amazed, I think, at the bigger picture here. The petitioner is acquiring land, which is not part of what is being considered here. Not now, it isn't. So view, if you will, what that neighborhood will look like if the petition is granted. Most of these people here didn't come that this would be the gateway to the city of Lemonster. It's just their bad fortune that it has turned out to be that. Now again, Residence B, build houses. It's a neighborhood. It'll be good for everybody, or most everybody. I can give you a thousand reasons or hundreds of thousands of reasons, or maybe a million reasons, why the petitioner might want this to turn his way. All I can suggest to you is, regular folks without a voice don't think it's a good idea. What number would it take? How many petitioners? How many people signing a petition would it take to sway you? How many? I'm in that 100, that 300-foot zone. How many? Okay? We know what's at stake here. We do. And I'll leave you with this. If the petitioner were unknown to anyone in this room, how much merit would this petition have, truly, if he were unknown to everybody in this room? Well, we don't have that luxury, do we? I ask for your consideration to reject this on its face.
Okay, final call. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Anybody going once?
I'm not gonna repeat myself. I just want to say, with the people that were kind enough to show up but don't want to speak are against this proposal, raise their hands. I just want to show one, too. There are people, and like she mentioned, some people will come down and just not get up and speak, but they're willing to come down and show support against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay. Last opportunity, anybody else? Okay. Counselor Quomier, you have a letter you'd like to read?
I do. This was a letter that was on my desk this morning. It's dated April 22, 2018. And it's from a, well, I'll just read it. It's addressed to myself. It says, "My name is Dorothy Douglas Rosario. I live at 395 Mechanic Street, right across from the eight lots on Mechanic Street. I am highly against the rezoning of this area to commercial zone due to the congestion already of traffic and numerous accidents that occur. So kindly read my statement at the city council meeting. Thank you kindly." And it's signed Dorothy Douglas Rosario.
Thank you. Okay, as I indicated earlier, we cannot act by law without a recommendation from the planning board. They have scheduled a meeting for May 7. So we're gonna be continuing this public hearing to May 14, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. I don't know if any counselors have anything they want to add or if they want to wait until the continued hearing. Counselor Quomier?
I would just, before we close out, I just want to just get word out there that, thank you for showing up tonight, letting your voices be heard. I encourage you to follow this through. Don't just let it go at tonight. If you spoke or if you didn't speak, if you feel strongly, one way or the other, please be sure to show up on the next hearing date.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Counselor Frieda?
I just want to add for the public, although the law states that we have to have a recommendation from the planning board, we don't necessarily have to agree with what the recommendation is. But law says we have to have the recommendation.
That's a good point. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Marchand?
You're gonna continue this to May 14, 2018, 6:30 p.m.?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right to the next hearing now?
Okay, we have a hearing?
So we're gonna take a break, maybe a two- or three-minute break before we get into session. But we'll muscle through this one first and then... But one more hearing.
Okay. This is a hearing before the city council relative to amending Chapter 16, Section 1634 of the revised ordinances entitled "Classification of Positions." By deleting the classification of S9 for city clerk and inserting in its place the classification of S10, such amendment to be effective July 1, 2018. Do any counselors in legal affairs have any comments or questions? Counsel Badanza, any counselors in general have any comments or questions? Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Second time, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. Council President, declare the public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will be in recess for about three or four minutes. So if you just kind of keep an eye on the clock and then we'll begin the session to the petition from the previous hearing this evening, After we read the communications from the mayor, before I... before I get into the petitions, first time on the calendar, we're gonna put you guys right in there. All right? You're welcome.